Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our work session, our May 18th work session of the Pitt County Board of Education. I will now call this meeting to order and I will take role to establish that we have everyone present. First, Anna Barrett Smith. Anna Barrett?
I keep unmuted and then somebody keeps muting me back. Probably by design, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Amy Cole. Okay, Amy is not present. Benji Forrest? I think I heard her here. I am present. Caroline Dougherty?
Here.
Here.
Mary Blunt Williams? Thank you. Melinda Fagundis? Tracy Everett-Lenz? And Worth Forbes?
Here.
Okay, I think we have all present except Amy Cole. Okay, we will proceed. I think the first item on the agenda is Deborah Baggett, who is going to give us a presentation on the 2021 interim budget resolution.
Yes. Okay. Good afternoon. Actually, we have an interim budget resolution for 2021 and this is basically a blanket statement that allows us to continue operating at the current year levels until we have any budget information from the state for next year. So we're just asking to put that on consent. There's no numbers or anything, it's just this little paragraph that allows us to continue to do business as usual.
Okay, and Emma has just made me aware that Amy has now joined the meeting. Amy, are you present?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, I totally forgot.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so Deborah said that this is just an interim budget that allows us to continue operating at last year's budget to go on consent.
Correct.
Right? Are there any questions from board members? I guess I need to poll everybody. Can we just unmute everybody if they have any questions? All right, I'm assuming there are no questions.
Okay, thank you, Deborah.
Okay, thank you, Deborah.
Okay, the next item is...
The next item is...
Do we need to unmute?
Unmute me.
The next item is the 2021 calendar update and I guess Dr. Council is doing that?
I got it. Is Dr. Council on the phone?
Okay, so Dr. Lanker is going to present the calendar update.
Just, I shared with the board a little while back that the General Assembly, when they went into session back in April, have changed the regulations for the 2021 calendar that goes back to House Bill 1043 and Senate Bill 704. But what they have done is...
Dr. Lanker, just a second. We're getting a message that nobody can hear the meeting. Yeah. Can you all hear the meeting now?
Benji, I can see your video. Can you hear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, everybody can hear. Okay.
All right, very good. Just recapping, the General Assembly, when they went back, I think it was April 28th, they made some changes to the, lots of changes, but several to the calendar bill, the calendar for the 2021 school year. That was House Bill 1043 and Senate Bill 704. What they have done was added five student days to the calendar, which actually started the week before, where our general calendar would have been, and added some remote learning days to the calendar, which we have built in. So what you see is, you think you have a copy of the early college as well as the traditional school calendars. It's got a little extra, some extra numbers in there just for your, for us accounting purposes. But if you look at August 17th, that will be the first day of school. Those are the five days there that we were, that were added in. Then we also will start teacher workdays on August 11th. So that's, that's the big changes as far as the start date. So we've already shared that information with the principals. Hopefully that information is getting out into the community, but this is something we do need to get approved. We've also made changes for the high schools where we have put all of the final exams before Christmas. We will have unbalanced, it's not written on here, but it will have unbalanced semesters. The first semester will be 84 days, second semester will be 99 days. But what we were able to do is, because of those five extra days, we thought that would be, this would be a good time to get those exams before Christmas. Principals, obviously, high school principals were thrilled. The high school teachers that were on the, the second committee to look at this were happy with that and none of the middle, or middle or elementary principals saw any real angst in changing this. So this is the calendar we're going to have for next year. Not sure if that'll be able to look the same the following year, but at least for one year, we'll be able to get those high school exams before Christmas. And we'll obviously start as soon as this gets approved. If we can put it on consent for the June board meeting, we'll get this out to the community and get, get into the high schools so that everybody's ready for exams the last four days of that semester.
Okay.
Questions?
Are there questions from the board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's Benji Forrest.
Yes, go ahead, Benji.
I just want to clarify again, I, I'm in a car dropping down the road trying to get back home from another meeting and I apologize, but, and it's been hard to hear, but did I hear, did I hear say that this calendar will reflect that exams will be prior to Christmas holidays?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I just want to go on record and say that I don't have a problem with that now. You know, we were going to delay that for a year, but because of all of this very unusual pandemic that has hit us and the way we've had to redesign the wheel and reinvent the wheel, I don't have a problem with that at all now.
Very good. And this is actually a direct result of the General Assembly adding five days to the beginning of the school year, because they've already went ahead and done that. We would have come back after Christmas and had exams the week we came back and that just didn't make any sense. So moving into the week before Christmas made the most sense. Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Madam Chair, I had a question. This is Tracy.
Yes, go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to say, hopefully this is a little bit of silver lining in a dark crowd that we, I mean cloud, that we do have this opportunity to have exams before Christmas break due to this legislation. So that's kind of exciting even if it's for only one year. But I had a question about the early college calendar. Is that still underway? Are there any revisions needed to that or adjustments?
What you see attached, and I don't have it up on my screen right now, you see, you have an attachment on your, on our assembly? That was the last, the last one that took place Friday afternoon. We have the, what you see in front of you attached to our agenda should be correct.
Tracy, do you have that attachment in assembly? Are you able to pull that up and see it? Although it's on the screen, right? They can all see the screen?
See the screen?
Okay, yeah. Okay, Tracy, are you, are you able to see that? And I couldn't tell if you had any additional question. Can she hear me? Okay. Okay, I guess I'm assuming there are no additional questions.
If you have additional questions, just call me and we'll go through it and if we have to make changes into June, we will. But just let me know if you have any questions on the, on either one of the calendars.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will put that on the consent agenda for our next meeting in June.
Correct.
Okay. All right, and I think the last item, well, not the last item, the next item is the CTE plan and Beth Ann Trueblood, I think, is joining us from Zoom, right? Carol?
Yes, I think so.
Beth Ann, are you there? Okay, do we need to, is she talking? Can you tell?
I just texted you.
Okay.
I just talked to her.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like she's on the line and it looked like she was lit up for a minute, like she was talking, but we couldn't hear her.
Hey, are you talking? Yeah, we haven't heard anything yet, so.
Is she unmuted?
All right, you want to, is she unmuted? Does your, does your computer have, are you in this building? Are you in this building?
She's muted now. I didn't put someone.
Can she unmute herself?
Are you unmuted? Can you unmute yourself? Can you hear me?
She's unmuted now.
You guys hear anything?
No, but it does show she's unmuted now.
She's still...
Oh, wait, we see the problem, we see the problem. Hang on.
Carol, if you'll call the meeting ID out to me.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Okay, hang tight, everybody. We have difficulty we're working through.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. You are in the meeting now. There are 15 participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Hello?
Oh, I think we have her now. Okay, we have Beth Ann. Beth Ann, the floor is yours.
Okay, sorry. So the first thing that Carol brought up just a few minutes ago was the local plan that I submitted and it is attached in your agenda. When you look at that plan, I want you to understand that there are no numbers there for data and the reason is because DPI has not loaded any data because we converted to a new system. So just when you see the document and you start reading the strategies in your free time, I just want you to know that, that there was no data that was supplied by DPI and the things that we wrote strategies on were a combination of the last two years. So Carol scrolling down and you can see that we don't have any data, there's no numbers for our categories and anything, but I just wanted to make you aware that it was not given to us by DPI. But going back to the PowerPoint, Carol, I'd like to share with you guys some things that had to do with Perkins Five and the new changes for CTE. First thing, according to Perkins Five, we had to do a comprehensive local needs assessment and this is based on two years. So we're working on this plan for two years. We sent out surveys through Qualtrics, we pulled labor market data, we had focus groups with teachers, with students, with administrators. We also pulled meeting agendas to gather our information for our comprehensive needs assessment. And like I said, this is a two-year plan. The one major thing is business was restructured at the state level and it's more focused in on IT. So this coming year, we have added Python programming, CompTIA IT fundamentals, cybersecurity essentials, wealth building and wealth management, which took the place in CTE of personal finance, which actually got moved to the history department. And I'm happy to say that accounting has come back and there is interest at a few schools in us teaching accounting. We did add electrical because of our needs assessment. Electrical is added to Rhodes High School for this coming school year. When we added electrical, we also applied for and were awarded the North Carolina Green Schools, Green Power Schools grant with a partnership with GUC. It's also partnering with the State Employees Credit Union. Rhodes High School will be working with Greenwood Utilities to put solar modules on the campus. I'm also impressed in our teachers and our students because our credentialing numbers are still high, we're 11th in the state and our CTSO participation continues to grow. Another thing that our comprehensive local needs assessment showed was our need for expansion of classes and that'll be further on in the, in the presentation. Well, I can add it now. So we received a Golden Leaf Grant for the Technical Academy at, in partnership with PCC. That was $200,000. A part of that grant would be to hire a director for the Technical Academy that will come in and an administrative assistant that will come in and recruit students there to participate at PCC their 11th and 12th grade year to earn a certificate and be one year ahead of getting their degree at PCC. Another thing was we are adding, this summer, our facility services is working with PCC and we're adding welding at DH Conley. We are also looking at adding welding at other schools as well as HVAC classes. We are currently in the process of updating the Foods and Culinary Lab at Farmville Central. So those are, those are some things that the, the local needs assessment kind of pulled out. We are planning to purchase computers for our five-year rotation of our computer labs in the business department in the middle schools and high schools. We are happy to say that the lab at Grifton School was a complete success, our career exploration lab, and we're adding a lab at CMF and Chikad for the 2021 school year. We are also updating the STEM labs to complete all of the 6, 8 middle schools at AG Cox, Farmville Central and Welcome. Right now, they, excuse me, they were module-based and now we're adding the whole class instruction, which is called expeditions. I'm also happy to say that our Transformers Pre-Aprenticeship Program has grew from three employers to seven employers. We are working with employers right now to try to figure out an orientation date for our students to participate in orientation and then proceed on to applying for the pre-apprenticeship program and be an employee. As you know, that Grow Local was cut this year, but just wanted to add that we had 3,500 students scheduled to participate with approximately 125 businesses, which was an improvement from last year. Pharma K-12 is on hold because of our facility at PCC cannot instruct at this point, but as you know, that is a partnership with Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College and the North Carolina Biotechnology Center. So our focus for the next two years, based on our needs, our comprehensive local needs, is a more defined career development plan for middle and high school students. The committee that consists of CTE teachers and support staff, we all agreed that this was important for our students. And some, here are some of the things that we have talked about and we will have a, we will start implementing this summer. Tradeify, which is part of our pathways initiative with the Northeast region. Tradeify is going to be used for career planning. All high school students are going to have a career development plan. We began last year, but we're going to offer a career fair at all, at all middle schools. And for that eighth grade career fair, we're going to include the high schools and their pathways. For example, if we have a company that does something in TNI, we're going to make sure that our schools have a booth set up with students and teachers to see, for the students to see that the business and what classes they need to take in order to, in order to take, to be prepared for a job in that career. Also, we are adding career, exploring career decisions to our, our middle schools by the use of our middle school career development coordinators. A new thing that the legislation asked us to do in CTE is to have some type of fifth grade exploration. So this coming year, we're going to pilot a junior job shadowing virtually with some of our fifth graders. We're going to see how it works and, and see how effective it is, but we do know it's important that fifth graders need to start having some type of interest in their career goals. All right. The second focus is articulation agreement with our community college. We think it's important for our students to be able to go to PCC and receive the credit for the class that they've taken in the high school. And so we're going to really work with our Pitt Community College counselors to make sure that it's an easy process for our students and our parents. And the last thing that, that our committee thought was important is to grow our assistant principals' knowledge of CTE. And the first step in that was to invite them to our CTE virtual summer conference, which is taking place in July. We have moved our summer conference, which all CTE teachers are invited to, as well as our assistant principals, to this virtual conference. While I talk about virtual, I wanted to also add that our credentialing is happening virtually online, so students are being able to take their credentialing exams online with the cooperation of our vendors. And also, some of our CTSOs have moved to virtual and we do still have state winners at some of our schools. So does anybody have any questions for me?
I do. This is Caroline.
Hey, Caroline.
Hey. I just have a few questions. Thank you, that's pretty comprehensive. The CLNA, is there any way we can actually review that? Because, you know, the documents just don't, I didn't see it in what we were sent.
So the CLNA, if you, the document that was sent, you'll see all of the information pulled together. So I'll be happy to pull it all together and, and scan all the information, all the agendas and all of that. But what we did is for the CLNA, you'll see in part two of the plan that I submitted, that is the results from the CLNA.
Right. I was, yeah. No, I noticed it, yeah, you talked, it focuses a lot on results, which is fine, I've just never seen the CLNA and I'd like to look at it. I understand.
I'll be happy to share with you the surveys that we completed and, and the data that, that we pulled together.
That's great. I mean, I'm sure y'all went through a process of identifying the top priorities out of that. I mean, like, the electrical obviously came out of that. Another question is about, let's see, the pre-apprenticeship, you said we've gone from four to seven?
Three, three to seven. Companies that are a part of our pre-apprenticeship program and we're continuing to add, add companies.
Which of, which of those seven are new this year, this school year?
So we are adding this school year, oh, we are adding a plumbing company, CL Waters. We are adding Mann and Ma, Manning Masonry. We are adding Greenwood Utilities, Lineman, and we are also adding Jack A. Ferrier Incorporated. Those are our four that we are adding this year.
Okay, because I guess I remember talking about Ferrier and GUC, hearing you guys talk about Ferrier and GUC, but not the other two. Were they the first, first two added or something?
Well, they, they were the first two that initiated, that they were interested and we, we made it official by them partnering this, this past spring.
And my last question is about the, I guess you said it was the Golden Leaf Grant?
Yes, ma'am.
That through that, we, we've hired somebody, I believe you said, to work with our schools to get students interested in, in pursuing technical careers and more information about that. Could you elaborate on that as, please?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. So we partnered with Pitt Community College to, we were a partner with them. They actually wrote the grant, well, we wrote it together, but the director for the Technical Academy is housed at PCC. But we are partnering with them so that the director kind of oversees the program areas and works with the students so that, and to recruit the students into the program at the Technical Academy.
And who is that? Who is the person that's hired?
Her name was Lynn Griffin. She was actually a career coach with the community college and she's been, when they were first hired, she is actually the only career coach that was one of the original ones. And she had been working with us for many years recruiting kids to PCC. And so I was actually on the committee to interview Lynn and she did a fabulous job and was very knowledgeable about our school system because we felt that it was important for the person in charge to know, to know our counselors and to know the processes that we go through to recruit our kids and all the events that we host.
So you're speaking in past tense, so I'm assuming it's over or she's gone or something?
No, no, when we interviewed, that was some of the criteria. Lynn moved, she actually was hired to be the, the director. She was a career coach.
So she's still the director?
She is the director. She was formerly a career coach and now she's the director of the program.
Of the Technical Academy. Is there any part of that that focuses on recruitment of more businesses? I mean, I'm glad we went from three to seven, but we need to be more like at 17 or 27.
Well, we, we are still recruiting businesses, but it's really important for us to make sure that the businesses that we recruit into the pre-apprenticeship program follow the same standards that we follow with Pitt County Schools and some of the other businesses. Like, for instance, we found really quickly that a lot of our, our companies that were interested, they did not drug test or background check. And that was kind of a big thing for us, because if we are going to tell parents that this is a great thing for our students, we need to make sure that they follow the same process that we do as well. So we are recruiting, but it, it's definitely a process and, and they go through a screening process just like teachers do.
So you're telling me that there are businesses operating now that don't do background checks or drug screen for their employees? Is that what you're telling me?
That's what I'm telling you. Yes, ma'am, unfortunately.
Now, are those like mom and pop operations? I've never heard of such a thing.
Um...
I mean, most, most corporations recognize, you know, that as a risk, both unchecked backgrounds, not, not, not only for working with students, but just for going into clients' homes and working with, with other team members. That's amazing to me. So are there, yeah. So you're saying that the employees are not drug tested or screened? I mean, that's just blowing my mind.
Yes, ma'am. And, and it's also important for us to make sure that, that, that our employers understand that, that those students are their responsibilities and a lot of our businesses are nervous about that. And so it, it takes, it takes a little bit of time for them to buy into a junior, a rising senior actually working, actually working for them, you know, because it does... You know, because it does make them very nervous.
I certainly understand that. Do we have videos and testimonials from the, from the businesses who found it to be successful? And whose responsibility is, is this to fight, to recruit businesses for pre-apprenticeships?
Yes, ma'am. So we do have a video out there for Transformers that we did last summer, and we are actually updating it with the students and the, the businesses that are coming on board this year. We have, we have brochures. We have a website that we have out there. And actually, Simone Paik is my, my work-based learning coordinator that is out recruiting, working with the students as well as the businesses.
She's full-time or half-time?
She's part-time.
Okay, I think, I've got, just in an effort to.
Thank you.
I have a group lined up to ask questions. Caroline, if, if, can you get together with Beth Ann, you know, one-on-one?
Oh, I'm done.
Oh, okay. The next person I had up for a question was Amy, and then we'll go to Worth, and then we'll go to Tracy. So Amy Cole, you're up.
Okay. We don't have the PowerPoint that you had up there, so I'm not sure. The very beginning, there were some classes that were mentioned. We're adding, like, I know one of them was like cybersecurity and Python or whatever it was. How do you plan, or how do you go about picking which schools these courses get taught at? We, we had an issue recently with classes only being offered at a high school that you can't go to through open enrollment. So we need to figure that out, too.
Okay. So I, I actually put all the courses in the registration guide. And students and teachers in the school select which classes that they are going to offer at the schools. So for instance, I'll give you an example. North Pitt, North Pitt did not, is offering cybersecurity. They're offering Apple Swift, and they're offering Computer Science Principles this year, which they've never offered before. And so the teachers and the administration felt that it was important, and they actually talked to the students and recruited students to take those classes. And so it's open to every school, any of these classes. You know, and I think it's, it's important to kind of discuss that. We are, we are in the process of building teacher capacity, but we have a lot of lateral entry teachers, and they have their, their specific courses that they like to teach. And so it's, it's definitely a process to build the capacity for our teachers.
I guess what I was trying to get at is, like, we had the, like, we had the issue with, it being said that there was only, that one particular high school that unfortunately is not open enrollment was the only school offering a certain class. And that, that's a problem when they can't go there. And I know you're saying that we all have, they all have the capability to do that. But I know we've talked about before, like, having, maybe even thinking about starting to designate high schools for certain types of pathways. I don't know if that's something that we need to talk about now. We keep mentioning it, but we never do anything about it. And I think that's a big issue.
What class is only offered at, at Conley?
I don't, I don't remember exactly what it was, but that was the reasoning for the request, I guess you could say.
Okay. Well, I know that last year at Conley, the teachers did want to pilot cybersecurity and pilot, pilot a Python class because a pilot is just, you know, when they're initially created the course and, and trying it out. And so, but those are now offered at several other schools. I know that South Central piloted Swift, and then now it's going to be at several of our schools this coming school year. So, you know, it, it's a process that, that we go through. But, you know, like, computer engineering, it, it's one of those classes that it's harder to teach if you're not experienced in that. But yes, we can definitely discuss doing some online classes, virtually, like, and adding to PCVA if that's something that, that would help. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think Worth, you're up next for a question or comment.
Beth Ann, I heard you were talking about increasing the assistant principal knowledge.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if this is direct, should be directed to Dr. Linker also, but I know APs who are getting close to being promoted to a principal, they need to be highly encouraged to, to attend. Because I know when I had APs come on board, they knew very little about CTE with the ins and outs. And it was a, a point to where we just had to have a learning session right there at the school. And I think some of these APs go in knowing little about CTE. I mean, that's been the past experience. And I just think that those that are beginning to get close to being promoted to a principal, they need to be highly involved in some training so that they are more aware of, number one, how courses may be in, in tune with the student interests of courses that they would like to have at the schools. And they just need to have a hands-on, you know, understanding of what, what is taking place with CTE.
Absolutely, Mr. Fourth. And, and that's why we, that's why the committee and I really felt that it is important that we focus on that. And the first step for that was inviting them to the summer conference that we're having this summer. Because we do know that there are very few of our assistant principals who came through CTE. You know, Mr. at EB ACOG, Mr. Thomas, he was one that was CTE, Mr. Joyner. They understand, however, you know, a lot of our assistant principals don't. So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to build our assistant principal's knowledge. And that, that's something that we've talked about in EPS with Dr. Laster. So we felt that that was important to add.
Well, I'm glad you're adding it, but I want to know how many attend after you, as, as you have invited them, I want to know how many have attended. So if you would give us a report on that at another time that you are presenting something, because I'm going to sure ask that question.
Absolutely. I'll be happy, I'll be happy to, to update you on that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I think next up is Tracy.
Yes. I was curious, were we able to hold the eighth grade career fairs before the closing of school?
I actually think we held four career fairs of the ones that we had scheduled. I know that CMF held theirs, Aiden held theirs. EB ACOG did not. Welcome did not. So I think we, we actually were able to hold about four of those. But a lot of them were scheduled in March and April.
Right. I was wondering, for those schools that did not have the opportunity for the eighth graders to go to the career fairs, I imagine also Curriculum Night was probably canceled for the high schools, which I found as a parent extremely beneficial to go out there with my child and see what the CTE classroom actually looked like, speak to the teachers, look at what they had going on in the classroom. Is there, do we have like a Plan B for trying to get that information out to the students? Either like, like by videotaping, having them walk around the classroom, explaining stuff, something that could be done remotely to provide them some more information since we're kind of missing that interaction piece and being able to get, to go out on campus and see it firsthand?
Actually, I, I do believe all the tours were completed before we went out in March. So I think that the registration part, which the counselors and the CDCs at the schools handle, but they also contacted the parents and the students personally and made phone calls. It may not have been the actual career fair, but all the schools did have presentations.
Have they ever been able to hold their Curriculum Night for registration prior to closing?
I don't think that the high schools did, but I, I'm pretty sure all the middle schools held their Curriculum Night, and it was right in that, in that window. I know for me personally, I have a rising ninth grader, and mine was rescheduled, and it was hosted for, at that middle school. And representatives from the high schools go to those Curriculum Nights.
Yeah, it's, in my opinion, it's just very different sitting at the middle school and having parents ask several questions about the high school without being able to physically go and see the classrooms and actually talk to the CTE teachers. It made a tremendous difference in my personal situation with my son. So I just, it'd be nice if we could figure out a way to sort of link that missing component there that they weren't able to have.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I, I will, I work with our schools in case something like this happens again to maybe have some videos or some type of virtual presentation that can be shared to parents so they can kind of see what happens at the high school. That's a really, that's a really good point.
Hopefully this never happens.
Thank you.
Benji, I think you are the last person that I've been notified has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Beth Ann, I know in the past, as part of Perkins to meet the state plan, we've had what they call these VOCAT tests, intercourse tests, and we also have had credentialing. But I understand this year that they're, they have added on the state level, at least for some of the program areas, something called Proof of Learning. We are going to honor that this upcoming year, correct?
Yes, sir. So let me explain Proof of Learning. Proof of Learning is actually one of our indicators, which we used to call Technical Attainment. So Proof of Learning is what you have included, the post-assess, the state assessment, credentialing, or something that we call project-based measure.
Right.
So all three of those are actually our Proof of Learning for our Perkins requirement. So yes, we will be offering, if there is a state assessment, we will be offering the state assessment, the credential, or the project-based measure, which we will follow the state recommendation. Now, I will say that there will be some credentials that don't fall along with what we do in our district. And I'll, I'll give you a perfect example. Is in our Family and Consumer Science area, they are going to a credential that deals with Safe Plates. Safe Plates is a North Carolina State University credential. None of our business and industries actually recognize Safe Plates. So we will continue to offer Thursday, which is what our business and industry actually recognize. When that happens, we, when I say we, I say our public school unit, our LEA, will have to then create a assessment for those students because we will not be using that credential for that. Because I feel like, and our committee feels like, that if we offer a credential for a student, it needs to be one that is supported by our business and industry. Because if our student goes up and say, well, I have the Safe Plate credential, and the business, business looks at them and says, what is that? You know, I think that that doesn't, that doesn't support our students when they go out to get a job, if that makes.
The more we can get away from these intercourse tests, and the more we can go into things like Proof of Learning and even credentialing, I think the more we will be ahead of the game. Because I have yet to run into a business or an industry that has asked any student what their VOCAT score was. I have run into several, or most, or if not all, that want to know what they can do. And it, CTE, Career Technical Education, is all about leadership and applied learning skills. And that, to me, is what we need to show. So I'm happy to hear that we will be honoring those Proof of Learning techniques that some of, some of the courses will have, have available for them this year.
Oh, absolutely. And I agree with you that, you know, our businesses are looking for experience, and they are, they are actually looking for, do you have this skill? And I think that that's important because that work-based learning experience is going to be important. And the, the hands-on experience tells the story. Although, at the same time, our articulation agreement, we have to tweak that in order to accommodate whether it's, which Proof of Learning it's going to be. Because when our students do go to the community college, we want them to get the credit. So we have to add that into our articulation agreement. But yes, sir, I totally agree with that.
Well, make, make sure you add it into the articulation agreement.
Absolutely. I'm on it.
Okay, I think that was all the questions that we had. Unless someone else has a question, then they haven't made me aware. Okay, at this point, Beth Ann, it's my understanding that we need to put this on the consent agenda for June. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. And when it comes on to the consent agenda, will it come on to the consent agenda exactly as, as it was presented, without that data in there? That's what we'll be approving?
Yes, yes, ma'am. No data has been uploaded as of Friday. Actually, as of this morning, when I checked again, no data has been uploaded. They are projecting that to be in July when it's uploaded.
Okay, so we need to approve basically the commentary without the data. Okay. All right, very good. I think the next item on the agenda is Karen Harrington to share with us anti-bullying efforts in Pitt County Schools. Thank you, Beth Ann.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to get back to the discussion that we were having prior to COVID-19. Really, a lot of focus on bullying and plans for how we could better address that and continuing always to think about how we can just reduce bullying in our schools. I think two weeks prior to the closing, some of us met with a group of parents and had a meeting that afternoon planned, but got canceled just to, due to the updates that we were getting. But we did some look back, and I'm not sure if it's been shared with you, but all the schools also shared data. Did we share that? Okay. So schools, so these are just our individual efforts? Or our district efforts? This is just a summary of district efforts for the last few years, where we have tried to address bullying, looked at a process. We've partnered with the Mediation Center of Eastern North Carolina to do Bullying Prevention Month. She also does assemblies as requested by counselors at several of the schools, along with conflict resolution. This year, she's also, the last two years, she's also been working with EB ACOG as a pilot in restorative practices. We partnered in 2016-17 with Trillium for Rachel's Challenge. And then we also have started doing some work with AHEC and other community partners in just looking at resiliency and also bullying as one of their focuses in 2017-18. Last school year, we implemented the See Something, Say Something tip line and partnered with Parents for Public Schools to develop a bullying workshop. And that, that came out of Parents for Public Schools Community Conversations the year prior and some of the things that parents were requesting. And so we have held three of those workshops. I will say that all of those workshops are poorly, have not been well-attended, given some of the, the concerns that we hear expressed. Typically, we may have anywhere from three to 10 parents that are not school system members attending those. But we have offered those in a variety of settings. We continued that into this year. And also, last year, we, we also worked on a parent resource, and I'm going to show you that in just a second. And then the other thing is that, that this is coming out also with our Portrait of a Graduate. of a Graduate work that we've been doing and, and just adding, um, social emotional planning. So all of those things are some of the, the large district efforts that we've done. Again, schools also do their individual bull, anti-bullying campaigns in a variety of ways, um, offer support groups to students, and, um, we've collected some data about that. So again, um, in 2018, 19, as a part of the workshop that we held, we developed a resource guide for parents called Understanding Discrimination and Harassment and Bullying. And, um, part of that was, um, a chart, um, within that resource guide, and that's available online, is a chart, um, that Ms. Setzer over at SUG Bundy found that was really helpful in explaining mean moments, conflict, um, versus bullying. And so, um, we found that those type of resources are really good and we shared that in the, the workshops that we held. And so this is just an example of one of the flyers where we partnered with Parents for Public Schools and also our local, um, SRO, um, Greenville Police came and, and talked in those workshops. And also SAD, our partnership with SAD. And so we've held, again, a couple of those workshops. We also, I, I just wanted to point out, um, the connection with our ACEs and trauma-informed work. Um, although that, that trauma work, um, may seem like that, that really has nothing to do with, um, bullying, it's, it's part of that and social emotional learning in that we've got to get our ki- kids to be more resilient and also to have some better self-awareness skills and self-management skills. And so all of that work kind of ties in. And so, again, I've shared this information about how we've been working with the ACEs work. Um, but I will tell you, in the last couple of months, um, I've never been more proud that we started that. And I did just want to thank the board and senior staff for, um, your efforts to support that work that we're doing. Because I think it's going to be more important than ever when our students and our staff, we really are finding out, a lot of our staff are using this work to help deal with the new stressors that, um, all of us are experiencing with trauma. And so I just wanted to take this time to say that, that trauma, sometimes we think, well, I've never been through a trauma, I've never had anything traumatic. But, um, in that work, they talk about little t-trauma and big T-trauma. So something, um, a move, um, you know, hurricanes, divorce of your parents, any of those things can be traumatic. So again, a bullying situation at school could be something that would be traumatic. And so this, this work that we're doing, I'm just very proud, um, that we've done that work because it's really been a great resource for our staff, um, during this time and to share that work, that with our students. And I hope that we continue that focus, um, as we move into the fall, um, when we come back. Again, some of our other work that's complimentary to, um, bullying is just making sure that all of our schools have access to school-based mental health. So we continue our partnerships, um, with Integrated and Pride, um, to make sure every school has access to school-based mental health. And then I just wanted to, um, in, in thinking of the bullying work and, and what we can do, just did some research about bullying being on the rise nationally. And so just to share that it is not an uncommon thing for, to see this increase in bullying over time. In a national survey conducted in 2018, they found that, um, 33% of students reported that they had experienced bullying. So one in three students are saying that they have experienced some kind of bullying. Um, and you see that that's risen, um, from 28% in 2015, 2015, 16. So we just are seeing a rise. And then the other thing, and I, I would say that, um, just informally, I would definitely notice that, is that middle school students reported in that same survey experiencing higher rates of bullying than high school students. Um, and so you can see the various reasons that they reported, um, that they had been bullied over time. And I think, you know, again, several factors may contribute, you know, as middle school students get to have freedom for the first time, in the lunchroom, in the hallway, they're not walking with teachers. Um, another thing that, as we look at this national data, you'll see is that probably starting in middle school, some kids younger than that, um, but the prevalence of cellphones and use of technology increases. And then I also think, um, there's more parent involvement still at middle school, and so kids may report that more frequently to their, to their parents, um, at that middle school age. And so just, um, some of the other data about nationally, um, if you look at these statistics, you just see that everything, you know, the first several talk about while online. So 42% of students indicating that they've been bullied online. One in four being verbally attacked more than once. So whether it's bullying or attacking, um, kids are seeing that more. Threatened, 35% seeing that they have been threatened online. Um, 58% noticed that something mean has been said to them online. So again, I think some of the rise in this bullying and what we certainly see in our schools is, um, the online presence carrying over into schools. So things that happen on Snapchat or now TikTok or, um, any of the apps that students are using tend to carry over into schools and, and we see, um, some of that play out in the schools. Um, so just wanted to show nationally, this is, you know, an epidemic or, um, a concern. And so really, what I wanted to focus today, because we've talked about bullying a lot, is, is just next steps. And again, this was our thinking, um, back in March, you know, in February and March, really focusing a lot and talking about how we could do better. And I'm certainly open to suggestions that anyone may have on how we can do this better. But for me, I think it really, at that time, was really three areas that I wanted to focus on. Bullying prevention, um, social media, you know, and how we can be all thinking about the use of social media and where that becomes a parent responsibility versus the school's responsibility, and then how we can all collaborate on that area. And then lastly, suicide prevention. Obviously, that was on our minds in March, um, following this, the death of one of our students. And just, uh, all three of these areas being really, really important. And so in thinking of how we've approached bullying in the past, really wanted to think about what could we do better? What could we do differently? And one of the things that really has come up is that it needs to start with students. Um, and so in several of our, in our presentations that we did in the past, um, we noticed this as well, but we really feel like we need to listen to student voice. Um, and a lot of the work that, that we talked about, talked about the role of being an upstander. And so one of the things that we have shared in our bullying presentations is that what we need to do is for kids that are watching bullying, maybe they're not the bully, uh, maybe they're not being bullied, but they are watching it happen and maybe encouraging it, maybe videoing it, or maybe just not saying something, maybe just being passive. And so I think whatever we do needs to start with students because students are the one that are engaging in the behavior and they need to be the ones that help us stop it. Um, and in looking at some research, just, um, student-led kindness campaigns are very important. And I just gave a brief, um, shot there, a screenshot of Northwest Elementary School where they recognized all of their students, um, that were reported as always being kind to their peers. And so these type of efforts, I think, really could combat it. And in my mind is, maybe we need to start with kindness and not focus on bullying because if we were all being kind to each other, we obviously would not bully each other. And so some of these, um, programs at the bottom really have that kind of start. Pink Shirt Day, um, where it was lift each other up. And so just themes like that, I thought were very positive. And, um, students need to be the ones that are, are having the voice and sharing what their concerns are and how to better handle it. Um, and so again, through our SAD program or SGA or other student groups, um, we could partner with having some kindness campaigns in schools. The other thought that I have now that I did not obviously have in March is that, you know, luckily, a lot of us have come together. One of the benefits of COVID-19 is that people are trying to be more kind to be, each other, trying to be more thoughtful. And so hopefully, we can kind of capitalize on that momentum and have students focus on the things that they are doing to help, um, during this time. What have they done proactively? And really just kind of changing our, what is happening within the schools. Maybe, also, you know, we all just miss each other a little bit more, um, you know? So our, our teachers are missing the students, our students are missing the teachers, maybe we'll all just be a little bit more appreciative as we return. So we can certainly hope. The other area that we were really focusing on is parents. Um, and again, we were beginning to listen to parents in small groups, um, met with a group of parents from one of the middle schools and just talked about their ideas. Um, they actually shared about Link Crew, um, or a parent university being a model to just increase communication, increase our collaboration. Again, by having these workshops, we have not found them to be well-attended, so we're thinking, what else do we do? You know, do we get parents in with a speaker or with their students? We're open to any of those ideas. There are some resources available through Trillium, um, with, um, a program and the link is there and we have that available to parents on our website. But where they can do, um, some professional development and access, um, topics and a variety of topics for mental health topics, but one of those is bullying and then also depression and also suicide. So just communicating more is one of the things that we felt like we needed to do with collaborating. Looking also at our community partners, I will share, um, one of the things I thought was really interesting that came up in a meeting that I was in with Keith Letchworth from Trillium, is that he attended one of the rallies following the suicide, um, of our student. And he had resources there. And he said there were probably 200 people at the re, the fair that he attended, and he had six parents come up to his table asking for resources about suicide prevention. And so again, we've, we've got to get, you know, the collaboration and not just talking about being concerned about bullying, but really what, we, what can we all do to work together? And that, and that was another thing that really was on my mind in March is that, um, we, we need to talk about suicide and we need to educate our students, but we also need to be careful of something called a contagion effect. And, um, that, that really was concerning me with the attention that, um, was brought to that, that particular death, is that sometimes, um, and I learned this in graduate school and that continues to be true in research, is that we just have to be careful of how much we note, um, a death of a suicide because young students can be impressionable and that can lead them to thinking about, um, just self-harm. And we did see an increase, right at, at March, we were seeing an increase, um, in our schools in reports of students reporting self-harm thoughts. So we certainly want to make sure that we're careful in how we do that. Again, with the social media use, we've just got parents need to be, um, aware and monitoring what their kids are doing. Um, I know this is short notice, but I participated last week in something that NC Stop Human Trafficking Now offered was a parent webinar, um, online session, and they're doing that again this Wednesday at 8:00 PM. Um, and if, in the presentation, you link there, um, you can click on that and register, um, to keep, for tips, a parent workshop on keeping your kids safe online that they're doing with human trafficking, um, and just increasing your knowledge as a parent. Um, and through that presentation, she shared these two apps that parents may be aware of, but the Bark app that helps monitor their kids' activity online in a less intrusive way because we know teenagers are not wanting parents to overlook everything that they do. But, you know, again, when my kids have a phone one day, um, and they're, they're online a lot more during this crisis, uh, I monitor what they're doing, you know? Um, and I monitor what they're laughing at. If they're laughing at something, I want to see, is it pranks or is it something that's, you know, they love to watch these prank videos? So, but I'm watching what they're doing. Um, and so Life360 also is an app where you can track where your kids are. And I've had some discussions, um, with the superintendent about maybe his use of that, um, app with his daughters. So...
He was used right now.
There, there you go. We can, you know, so we can, we just need to, as parents, be monitoring what's going on and then working collaboratively again. How can school help you? But then also, what is, you know, between two parents, um, when there is a bullying or social media instance of, um, some things that are inappropriate. Um, and then the last part of, you know, the plan, I think what we need to do is just continue to be sure that we're giving resources to our staff. Um, staff development and buy-in on how staff can help, uh, reduce bullying for our students. Again, through bullying prevention efforts in the school and being a part of those, um, increasing that communication. Also, training in suicide, um, and what are the warning signs for suicide or depression and mental health? And so again, some of the things that we've offered. Um, and I'm working with some community organizations through AHEC and other groups, um, and looking at continuing our reconnect for resilience. We now have our own trainer, so we will be able to offer that, um, basically for free other than sub-cost and, and some minimal training materials. But also two programs, um, Youth Mental Health First Aid, and then the Assist Program through Real Crisis Center is a suicide prevention training, and that's, um, being rolled out in the community. And some of our, um, student services staff have had that in the past. I thought a larger number had, but we're, that's something that we were working with them on, again, prior to March. And then again, our Portrait of a Graduate, as we're looking at that and unveiling that in the fall, um, social emotional learning became, you know, was one of the major things that came up. And so, and then as we talk about reopening efforts, you're seeing a lot about social emotional learning and how we have to make sure that kids are feeling, um, okay and just building those skills. So those were kind of some of our plans of how to address this. Um, and I, again, am open to any feedback from parents or just, uh, anybody on the board of what are some other ideas? Because sometimes you, maybe you can't see the forest for the tree, so it will not hurt my feelings if somebody says, you're doing it wrong this way, it would be better if you did it this way. I would love to do it because we just, we're not sure how else to do it other than some of these efforts.
Okay, it looks like, um, Anna Barrett has a question and then Caroline. So Anna Barrett, you're up.
Thank you, and, and thank you for all your efforts, Karen. Um, this is more just a thought because I have been like, I'm sure many board members on the receiving end of phone calls from parents who, who are complaining that, that, um, they don't believe in our zero tolerance policy. Um, and so I guess my suggestion is, I know we are doing some training, um, perhaps even a lot of training with our administration on, um, how to listen empathetically and, um, you know, how to make people feel heard because it's been my experience with all the phone calls that I've received, um, that oftentimes they are diffused just by making the parent feel heard and sort of, you know, being empathetic with them. And, and half of their concern is that they feel like, eh, administration at various schools, um, you know, is, is not hearing them. And so I would just encourage us, now we, we know administrators could probably spend all day long, um, fielding parent complaints and sitting and, and being, you know, a, a listening ear to parents, and that's not practical. But, um, I think just more work put into systems within the schools for how to, um, filter parent complaints and concerns and how to, um, again, make them feel heard, not brush them off, not, um, because whether or not something's truly bullying or not by the definition, when a parent is feeling that their child has been bullied, they are not going to stop until somebody, you know, listens and sort of confirms their feeling, you know, or, um, I can't think of the word. But anyway, so when somebody acknowledges their feelings to be true, um, and then, you know, doing that with the, the kids as well. So I think a lot of it is customer service, um, and, and delivering customer service with a sincere desire also to, to know what's going on with our families to the greatest extent possible. Thank you.
I agree. And I think, um, we certainly see that in schools where, you know, there are more conversations going on. And, um, again, Ms. Setzer, that use of that chart, she did, she did a workshop for her families prior to, uh, our large workshops with Parents for Public Schools. And she said that chart, she gave it to, out to parents to hang on their refrigerator. And that really did help in the future, having some conversations to say, I think this is a mean moment, I've looked at the chart, but it still is wrong. And so it, it really helped, so I agree completely and we will work on that.
Okay, and then I think Caroline is the only other question that I'm aware of. Go ahead, Caroline.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, this is awesome. I so appreciate you going back to the 2015, 16 school year and, um, showing the progress that, and the huge amount of effort, thoughtful efforts that, um, Pitt County Schools with its partners has put into, um, this. It is, is really... It is really, really impressive and I'm deeply appreciative of it. The only thing I want to, you know, I've been to a couple of those sessions that were held and you're right, incredibly disappointing that there's so few parents that come. So I think we should use, I mean, that's basically feedback. And I don't think it has anything to do with the content. People are in general, you know, or the host, people are in general thinking that their kid's not at risk for self harm or bullying or, you know, bullying, serious bullying. Most people don't, in general, anticipate that that's going to happen. I think sharing some of that information that you have and I, national data, but I think if we had even Pitt County Schools or regional or even North Carolina data that shows, you know, parents at the beginning of the year, did you know that, you know, 55% of middle school or whatever it is, middle school students in North Carolina or Pitt County or whatever, our region will report being bullied online or have a threat made against them online. I mean, as much as we can bring it home and make it real to our parents, the more attention we're going to get. Because I think the saddest thing of all is when something horrible happens and then we end up after the fact, you know, that's an opportunity to talk about and show off, not show off, but show the public and our parents whose awareness is heightened at that time, all these resources. So the question is how to get their attention ahead of time so that the information is in their hands. And I know that you've tried so many different things and I think some of them have worked well. And then I think we need to think more about how we can strategize. And it might be that we need to do some either focus groups or testing. Maybe, you know, people are so used to consuming a wide variety of media, you know, maybe with Jennifer's eye towards what gets liked, what gets looked. And that might be helpful to see if we can engage parents at the beginning or before the school year starts. And honestly, the fact that we've gone through this and going through this pandemic, it gives us an opportunity to build on the fact that, you know, everybody knows that kids and parents and everybody's stress level is higher, is elevated now. So maybe we can build on that. And I'm really not suggesting that we do anything different, but that we take the knowledge that parents don't like to come to face-to-face meetings, which I think we've learned, and maybe figure out other ways that we can reach more of them to prevent or identify early situations that could, you know, have serious traumatic impact on our students.
That's great. As you said that, I was just thinking about maybe how we could do October Bullying Prevention Month a little bit differently. And I'm looking at Jennifer just brainstorming it as I'm speaking, but like we did with Strive for Five and really making that, sharing data about attendance and we were seeing really good results with that. I don't know if we'll ever have a focus on attendance again or at least for a couple of years. And so I feel so bad about that campaign, but maybe in a similar way of just getting that message out. So thank you. That, as you spoke, I started thinking of some ideas, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. I appreciate it. And I think next is unpaid lunch debt with Dr. Lenker and two of our rock star principals, Mr. McDuffie and Mr. Briney.
We had talked about unpaid lunch debt in the past and where, where we were, we've been having that conversation back at Christmas into the next couple of months and then COVID happened. So this is just kind of going back to revisit. And at that point, I think we were in the neighborhood of about $45,000 is our lunch debt and really just a way to bring the board up to speed, make sure the board understands this is something that is going on, is occurring. And this is obviously not a Pitt County Schools problem. If you go online and research this, you'll see this all over the country. As I shared before, there have been several members of the General Assembly who have introduced bills that have not gone very far yet, but introduced bills as a way to make, to change the way we do school lunches and school breakfasts. So, but I did bring some principals in with us who are, who have to deal with this on a daily basis, really just to talk about and answer questions you might have about how they try to work with their students and how do we, to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on. So I'll introduce, I have, well, here they are, Paul Briney from Creekside, Norm McDuffie from AG Cox, just to answer any questions. And if anyone have any questions at this point? Or do you guys want, you have something to? Okay, we're going to let them take the mic for just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Paul Briney. I appreciate you taking the time to hear the concerns or what we're doing as a school level. Cafeteria charges are something that we've been focusing on, I would say probably the last couple of years in regards to schools that are not the CEP schools. So students who do have to pay for their breakfast and lunch. I believe as Dr. Lenker said, I think the last bill we got was about $45,000. At Creekside, we had close to 2,500. So when Dr. Lenker, he and I have been talking about this and one thing I did when he and I were in discussion was I sent out a Google form to all the principals in Pitt County asking them how they're handling this and what they're doing as a school level, just to make sure I'm giving feedback based on what everyone's doing and just not what we're doing at Creekside. So what we're doing as a district, I would say schoolwide for those schools who still have balances, we're sending letters home. They do come from the cafeteria and they're sent home weekly. We're also sending letters as principals with us signing them, reminding parents of what their outstanding balance is. Some of us have, you know, for me, for instance, I know Wintergreen does the same thing. We ask the parents to sign it and return it just as documentation. So we do know that the parents received that letter. We have our social worker involved in some families, not all families, but for those who the social worker may have a relationship with, they're speaking to families, seeing what they could do to get some money recuperated. The all calls through that Sunday, or I say Sunday because I make a Sunday all call, but through that Blackboard Connect, we're making phone calls through that, reminding parents of what they owe. We're sending individual messages to parents as well. So it's not going out schoolwide to those who are paying the bill. And then one thing we're also doing is sending additional free and reduced applications out to families regardless of the school year or what time it is within that school year, because they can still qualify for free or reduced breakfast or lunch, really no matter what time it is. Even with all that being done, it's time consuming, we're working as a team, we have our cafeteria managers behind us. But before COVID hit and schools were let out, we still, as I said, at Creekside had about a $2,500 bill that we're responsible for paying. What I've done over the years, and I've shared this openly with my colleagues, I look at it as, okay, it's my responsibility right now. So just as we would at our house or in our own homes, I go ahead and budget for it right away and just try to estimate what I'm going to owe. If it was that $2,500, the unfortunate pieces that's coming out of resources that we could use and give right back to the students, because I am taking that out of school fees or I'm taking it out of grade level accounts. And again, that's things that we could use towards our students. One thing I did this year that was different, and I know a few other schools did this because I shared it with them as we were having these conversations, a lot of our field trips being that they were canceled, parents already paid for those field trips. So I sent out a Google form to all my parents asking them, and it was very specific, so there's no mix up and they can't come back down, down the road asking me for a refund. I did ask them if they would like a refund in a form of a check and asked them to give me an updated address so I could send that out, or if they would like to use those field trip funds, which they already paid, to pay off their own student's debt or donate to the school's debt. And we collected about $1,200 doing it that way, but it still gives us, you know, a decent amount of, a decent amount of money in a bill that we have to pay. So I think the struggle on our end is just making sure that we have those funds available. We're contacting parents, it's just difficult. It's difficult for us to get all parents to respond. And some of them look at it as it's, it's not their problem and they do know that we're going to pay it. I'm mindful of what I put out there because I do know things we put out there can get twisted and it could be a PR piece. So I, you know, I try to be mindful of what I put out there and how I communicate with the parents. One thing I've done last year was ask them if they pay half, I'll pay half. And parents were receptive to that, but then you still have 50% of the parents who are not making the effort to pay the bill. One thing, you know, that would be nice and I don't, I don't know the logistics behind it, but we do have a large bill at my school at least, even when we're handing in those free and reduced application forms, if they return it and get qualified, let's say in January, whatever the balance they had from September to January, we still have to pay. So even though they may qualify for the free and reduced lunch, they may still have an outstanding balance that we're responsible for. So I'm not sure if that could be looked at from our child nutrition department. And then the last piece, it's different when we look at elementary school, middle school and high school. And the example I'll give is high school can hold it over the students if they're keeping a tally from freshman year to senior year, they may be able to say, okay, well, you owe us $300 in lunch bills and here's all the receipts that we have in regards to what you owe. Where in the elementary level, at least in my case, I don't, I don't feel right taking a field trip from a child or taking field day from a child because they don't have the funds to pay a bill. I believe that's a parent's responsibility. But everybody else has their own hardships, which I understand as well. So it's difficult when you look at it based on school level, what can be done? And that's what we're coming, I guess, for some advice on and what we can do as a team to help everybody out and make sure these kids are eating and no one's, you know, we're just talking about bullying. I don't want to make any child feel uncomfortable and I don't think, and I know, I can say, I know none of us want to put a child out there and put them in front of their peers and say they can't pay for their lunch because that's going to make them feel uncomfortable.
Thank you for your time. I'm just going to add a few things kind of on a personal note, but as Paul was just saying the part that we don't want any kids to feel uncomfortable. Unfortunately, the kid is caught in the middle of this. You know, we don't have access to the parents like we have access to the kids every day. And so half of me, my heart goes out for my student because I do want them to be able to eat, but the other half is like, okay, who's going to pay the bill? And so it's one of those, for example, our case, I'm going through my list of students and, you know, I'm calling students in one at a time just to have conversations. Well, the story that I've been sharing, I had this sixth grader come in, sit in my office and tell me right up front, Mr. McDuffie, I know we owe the money, my mom lost her job, but as soon as she get back working, we're going to pay it, from a sixth grader. Okay, so I'm feeling about, you know, this big, here I am calling the student in. What do you say to a kid like that? And then a week later, he sees me in the hallway, reminded me that he said he's going to pay me the money. Well, luckily our PTO stepped up and they was able to foot that bill. But to see the smile on his face when I told him he didn't have to worry about it, I mean, it was priceless. But to go back to what he's saying, we putting forth efforts to try to collect this money. I mean, making the phone calls, sending out the mails. It's just not coming in the way that it should. And in my other soapbox, when I talk about this around my wife sometimes, just about money and she, she asks me, which is a good question, why's the kids have to pay for? Why should they have to worry about that? I don't know, but somebody got to pay for it, you know? And the thing that I finish up, we have about 140 students, our bill right now is $4,917. So out of 147 students, if we take school funds to go towards that $4,900, that affects 830 kids. So as he was saying, you know, if we take money out of the school account, it affects overall things that you can do for the school body as well as for the staff. And so it's a tight situation. Don't necessarily know, I know the right answer. I just know our pockets ain't so deep and I do want kids to eat at the same time. So that's my two cents and I'm sticking to it.
Okay. I think, are y'all all available for questions? I think Anna Barrett had a question first. Go ahead, Anna Barrett.
Okay, thank you. So I've gotten a couple of questions here over the last few weeks about parents feeling like it is incredibly unfair that their child is on the hook for a lunch, a lunch debt. When some of our schools, for example, the schools that two of my children go to, everyone is eating free. And my child doesn't need to be eating free, but because, just by virtue of the fact of where they are in school, either by choice or by district, they don't have to pay, but then other families are having to pay. And I guess my, it's a, it's a two-pronged question. Number one, does anybody have any good way to try and make people feel better about the fact that my child doesn't theoretically, she doesn't eat lunch at school, but if she did, she wouldn't have to pay when other people who may be in a more stressful financial situation are being hounded about lunch debt? So number one, I'd be open to any kind of talking points that somebody could give me on how to make people feel better about that, myself included. But second of all, you know, just trying to think out of the box about how to recover lunch debt, is there any value in creating some sort of campaign to try and get community involvement from parents like me whose children aren't required to pay for lunch? And asking, you know, your child has been able to eat for free all year, please consider making a donation toward the accounts of students who have to pay. I mean, it's kind of an out of the box thing to think of, but it does seem quite unfair that, that people without financial need or their children are eating free while others aren't. So I'd appreciate any guidance somebody could give me on that and maybe thinking through how we could pool resources or something. Thank you.
I can, I can answer the question too. I get what it is because I thought the same thing. When I was principal at Farval Middle for those three years, two out of those three, we were, all our students received free breakfast and lunch. And it was nice. My first year there, I walked in with a big bill and had to figure out how to pay that. But the second, you know, the next two years, we didn't have to worry about that. And I, so I get that and I really do not have an answer to that. I believe it's the application we have to fill out and it goes to what our population is, I believe, regarding free and reduced lunches. I believe that's a state thing or maybe a national thing. But in regards to the second question, I do know Ms. Baggett had some local businesses that wanted to donate and some private, it's just private folks who said they would pay a lunch bill and then I do believe when they, and this is what she and I discussed, especially for Winterville Schools, I was a Winterville resident, when they heard how much the cafeteria debt was, I think they pulled back because they didn't think it was going to be nearly as much money. So, you know, we reach out, I had my PTA, I had parents who emailed me even after I sent the form saying they're willing to donate more money. But also, you know, right now with times how tight they are and everything going on, it's difficult to ask parents to step up and pay for a bill that they're not responsible for because they've already paid their bills, so asking them to pay for others.
Anna Barrett, I would say the, the second question you had, I think is something we could certainly look at and it is a different way of approaching it, so we'll certainly follow up on that. Your first question, I'm not sure with the guidelines the way they are, what our options are in that regard. But your second option certainly is something we can, we can definitely look at and follow through with. I'll work with Mr. Briney and the principal organizations on that.
Right. And I recognize that the determination of which schools eat free and I understand the criteria, or I sort of understand the criteria that's used to determine that and that it's made, that decision is made above our heads. You know, obviously it's just frustrating that, you know, your child's districted to this school and just by virtue of where you're districted, you have to pay, but by virtue of where somebody else who's, you know, in an equal financial situation is districted, they don't have to pay. So it's more of a maybe understanding that this may become more of a concern to people because I've heard it more here recently. Maybe we need to try and put together something, you know, obviously we can explain that it's based on student population, but it's still not fair. Of course, life's not fair, but that's a whole different thing. But anyway, just if, you know, if anybody has any wonderful ways to present it that sort of makes people feel better, that's all I was looking for.
I would, thank you. I would follow up and say, I think as a, as a school board member myself, one of the things to do is advocate with our General Assembly members on ways that they can actually affect this, because this is something that, that is, again, it's not simply happening here in Pitt County. This is, unless you're a 100% CEP district, and there are lots of those obviously, but unless you're one of those, this is a problem that we're, that you're seeing across the state, across the country. So having our General Assembly members look at it, I know they have, would be a way for, for this to, you know, maybe get a little more streamlined.
Okay, and I think, Caroline, did you have a question or was your statement? Did you want to ask that question that you put in the chat window about looking at trend data?
Okay, yes, yes, yes. So I just want to try and understand the charge report. All of the schools that have a dash beside them, are all of them CEP schools? Like I don't, I don't think Conley is a CEP school.
Conley's not, but if, I'm not seeing the list in front of me. Is it right here? Was that this right here? Oops. What did I do? Conley's bill was paid in full, that's why it says nothing, that bill was paid. Like, you'll see the ones that have like a, looks on, on my sheet, it's grayed out, but, uh, are the CEP schools, I believe?
So how did, so my question about the trend data relates to, um, I mean, how did Conley pay in full? And if we looked at trend data over the years and there are schools who figured out how to handle this, you know, that would help, that would help inform, um, us of how to, you know, share that information. How did Conley get their bill completely paid?
They paid it from their local, their
He just paid it?
School fees, just like Mr. Briney's going to do. They're just early in the year, but they know there's more lunch, so they went on and paid it. But yes, that does in essence take away from other things that could be purchased for those students.
Okay. Did you hear that Caroline? Deborah said that Conley paid it out of their school funds, um, which of course essentially does take away
Okay, so it's, it's not that the students at Conley, um, completely avoided charges, unpaid charges, it's just that the school paid it off. What other schools paid off their debt that's on this chart?
Uh, Creekside Bill has been cut down, that, that's actually a week old, it's been reduced by a thousand dollars or so, about $1,200, um, because he's done, because what Mr. Briney just said.
Just from a standpoint of looking at apples to apples, um, I mean, I understand this is what it's owed now, but there should at least be two more columns on this, um, for us to actually really get a handle on this issue. And the first one should be, um, what's titled Tot- Total Student Charges? Um, because what you're telling me is, um, that column is not actually what students' charges were unpaid. That, what you're telling me is that is the column that has resulted, um, from student charges that either have or have not been paid in part or in full.
That's the balance column.
Second column would be, um, payment toward student charges, like by the school or by donations. And then the, this column should be the last, last column, like what's left over, what's unpaid at this point. Because it, we really aren't able to compare apples to apples. I suspect that some schools are in a better position to pay off their student charges than others, whether that be through their own finances or through community support or relationships with businesses or civic groups. I think it would be more helpful, um, if, if we could actually see, and that's what I mean by the trend data over time, actually look at what are the unpaid school breakfast and lunch debt at each school by the same time each year and look at that data year to year? And then figure out, you know, what can we do that some schools are able to do that others are not able to do to get this charge down? And then lastly, Dr. Linker, you know, we all do need to advocate, um, at the, at least the state level, um, if we're interested in, um, either having more schools be CEP or coming up with some creative solutions. Um, because you're right, it's certainly not limited to Pitt County or North Carolina. It's a, it's a nationwide problem.
Thank you. I will, we took notes and we'll go back and look at our, our chart.
Okay, I think next is Worth and then Tracy.
Is he ready? Mr. Forbes, you there?
I'm unmuting again.
All right, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Um, all I would say is, and until we come up with some, uh, solutions for this, it's only going to get worse.
Correct.
Um, you know, every year, uh, more and more kids, more and more parents, I mean, you know, some things that I'm saying may not be popular, but it's factual. They find out and say, well, you just don't worry about paying because it, nothing's going to really happen. But I do know that it is not fair to the whole student populate, population to be pulling funds from instructional programs or in, or in areas where you could buy instructional items for all kids to pay this bill. And, um, you know, I remember, um, when I was a principal, as soon as a student, um, started getting behind, uh, I had my counselors call those students in and, and as well as the parents, they would eventually come up with a contract, the parents would sign the contract to find out why or to help them pay that bill before it got out of reason. I mean, you know, you get way up there in a number and I look at some of these schools and they got $10,000 student charges. I mean, A, it's hard for me to even believe. Two schools we're looking at right there, over, over, uh, $26,000. And, uh, I don't know, understand how this has got out of hand and, you know, so big because, uh, we had, uh, when I was a principal, we always tried to get that, uh, amount down as much as possible. And, uh, I know the food, food services, they worked with us, uh, to, that was something that we always had to, um, you know, look at. And I, I just think that, uh, of course it's important for us to listen to reasons, uh, why the, uh, parent may not be paying or the kid can't pay the, uh, lunch due to a loss of job. Well, that is a, uh, something there that the school would work with that parent. And just like, uh, was mentioned a few minutes ago, when that kid said that my momma's lost her job, I understand that. But you look at some of these high schools and I guarantee you, when those high school kids leave that campus, they go to the nearest store, buy two bags of potato chips and a Pepsi-Cola, but yet can't pay the lunch. So I just think we as a, a school system need to start brainstorming on some, uh, things that we need to do because all that's going, all that's going to happen is it, is it's going to get more and more and more.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Worth. Tracy?
Um, I know I had asked before and I probably have some pretty strong feelings about this whole issue with lunch debt and such, but, um, I thought in the past that if we had looked at the numbers, uh, and compared with the lunch debt and what it might cost us to add on several schools or even the entire district for CEP, uh, eligibility status, um, how would that even out as far as what we're dealing with right now, um, in regards to money being spent at the district? And, um, I would like to applaud Mr. Briney and Mr. McDuffie. I know it seems like there's a, just a whole lot of effort involved with trying to collect this money. I mean, he's mentioning letters coming out from the cafeteria, from the principals, getting the social worker involved. There's a lot of time and resources spent, um, trying to recoup these fees that could be probably better spent on other things instructionally instead of them having to deal with these sorts of issues. I was just wondering financially, would it be, um, in our favor to at least consider adding on several schools or the district in comparison to the lunch debt that we're continuing to accrue?
Let me, that's a conversation Gretchen and I have had. Let me revisit that with her and get those numbers, plus this, keep in mind, this also affects the Title I allotments. That's the big issue. If we start adding too many schools to CEP, um, you could be taking away, not only could be, you would be taking away money from schools, uh, elementary, middle schools that have been qualifying for, for federal Title I funds, uh, and taking away money from them or reduce their allotment. So that would affect those schools. But let me work with, um, Gretchen and Deborah. We can go through that in the Federal Programs Department and see what that would look like.
Okay. But I mean, I agree. I mean, it, it's a comparison, it's a trade-off possibly. Um, I just know that there's, I was very excited when I went to the board presentations, uh, at the conference and there's just a lot of good, um, outcomes that come from being CEP for the whole district, um, not including, um, just improvement in behavior and attendance and several other issues, so that beneficial in more ways than just one, of course, but I just wanted to see where we are with that.
Let us follow back up with the board.
Um, and I just, I don't think, I don't know of any other board members. I did have a few questions myself. Um, principals, are there any things that we can do to make, that you've noticed that would make the process easier for parents as far as filling out the free and reduced lunch application? Like, I'm assuming if someone is not paying for their lunch, I would like to believe that there's a reason that they can't pay for it. They have some financial strain or stressor. Um, are, can we help to get those applications filled out? Like, can we fill in almost all of it except for the, you know, whatever you have to report on there and the signature to make it easier for parents?
I mean, on my, on my end, I don't know what there is to do because we offer to sit down with a parent and fill it out. Um, open house, we have parents, we have a booth set up where parents can receive them and we fill them out with them then. Sometimes they're uncomfortable doing that, so we say, take it home. Um, we go have our social worker go to the house and see if they need assistance. We send it electronically to them. We're getting it in their hands. Um, I'm even sending it home with every child the first couple of weeks of school, knowing that parents may have already got, gotten one. Um, so I don't know how else we can get it in their hands or what needs to be done to get them to fill it out. I think that's more of the problem than filling it out. Um, for some of them, it may be a pride thing, some of them, they may not know how to fill it out. And when I make my call, I says, feel free to come in and I can sit down with you myself and help you fill it out. And that's happened a couple of times. And then, you know, the other piece of saying, well, if you pay half, I'll pay half, that helps as well, just to lower the cost. Um, but I do think, you know, there's, between all of us putting our heads together, we tried so many different things and we still have a $45,000 balance.
Yeah. And I wondered on that application if, you know, as we are advocating, right, as elected officials with our other, with our legislators, if there are things on that application that are just too much that we need to specifically advocate for, does it, like, I mean, I, I'm embarrassed to say, I've never filled one out, I don't know what's on that application, I have never looked at one. Um, but if there's just, if we're asking for too much information that it does make it difficult for a parent, then maybe that's something that we can advocate for, if you have any insight.
And, and that's a good point that you mentioned because when you actually look at the form, it, it can be overwhelming for educated, y- y- you know, adults. And so some of the information that they're asking, I don't think it's hard, but it's just the layout of the form.
It's a lot. When you look at it, you're like, oh my goodness.
So I'm not sure who would be in charge of trying to maybe revisit the layout. Uh, but it, it's, you know, the information I think is straightforward, but it's just the layout of the form of, and how they asking the parents to complete it. And I do know for us, if we try to get as many forms filled out in those first three weeks of school, because you know how to begin in the school, all those papers go home, parents stay signing away after those three weeks, it, it, it cuts off tremendously from there. But, um, we do provide forms to go home as well, have parents to come in. And we actually put, uh, applications in some of the mails that we send out to the students. So, you know, we try different varieties of ways to, to get those forms filled out as well.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then lastly, I know if you are a parent of a student in a CEP school, you're going to be receiving a P E B T card, really, shortly. Um, I know I've gotten a letter in the mail, um, myself. Is there any way that we could donate, like parents who have a child that goes to a CEP school that doesn't get the free and reduced lunch, doesn't need that P E B T card? Is there any way that we could donate those funds back to help pay that debt or is that fraud? I don't know.
Let us follow back up on that question too.
Okay.
Those are federal programs, so we need to get the right people answering those questions.
Right, okay. I just thought when we were thinking of campaigns and how to pay that debt, that would be.
Be a good way.
Right, yeah. Okay, all right. I think, let's see, um, I don't have any other questions on the chat screen, so I thank you gentlemen, I appreciate your input and board members. I guess we continue to brainstorm and think of ways to, to help address this. Um, the next up, next person up on the agenda is Ron Butler, talking about athletic eligibility protocols.
This is a follow-up conversations we've had before and, uh, Dr. Linker's giving me the eye like he wants me to go quickly, so I don't know. Karen, is that bullying? You know, he, he gave me the evil eye, so.
Communication.
Yeah. Um, we'll go quickly. As we talked about, um, eligibility, the protocols, and, and first of all, let me say, we're most directors here trying to promote what their programs are in athletics, we want people to realize this is an extracurricular activity. Go to the school you're supposed to go to and if you want to play sports, fine, but that should be part of that school. Uh, unfortunately, we have, we have to put in a lot of rules in place just to avoid that athletics not being the primary reason that people go. Um, I will say I look forward to attending another athletic event and, uh, I, I will not complain the next time I go to that, you know, middle school basketball game, I'll, I'll look forward to it. I think more people are NASCAR fans today than ever before, um, because that's the only thing you can watch on TV. Um, so, really want to talk about, you know, obviously if students eligible to participate at school, they, they are assigned by the Board of Education. And A, there is said is the obligation of the school to know the resident status of each athlete. So I'm going to talk about what we're going to do different, so I'm going to skip this quickly and go to what we're going to do different. But it's still a responsibility of the school to make sure that, that student athlete is eligible and we will not take that away, that's, uh, responsibility away from them. Now, we also had the, the, the changes of what a bona fide is, uh, I won't go over the video, but that'll be at the end if you want to watch that, but then also it's, it's listed straight here and a lot of people had the question, do they really understand it? I, I would be willing to bet that the spouses of our athletic directors and coaches could pass a test on what a bona fide move is. So I'm, I'm not going to give anyone an excuse that, you know, it is from lack of knowledge. I think our problem is sometimes it's too much knowledge. All right, where's my name? What I want to get into is the protocols and what they do, or what we're doing now and what we're going to do differently. So Carol's pulling up the, uh, the master eligibility sheet and that is a form that people have always done.
It's down in the corner, Carol, can you see? There you go.
So if you look at this form, this is nothing new, this is a form they always do, but there's several places, um, that's up here, where, right here it says meets the LEA attendance requirement. Then it's got check if parents live in this administrative unit, check if student meets all residence and/or transfer regulations. So there's several places, but it's easy to put a check. What we want to do differently that I've discussed with some athletic directors would possibly do it, is the next form under this one.
That scrolls down.
No, not, not that one, the next form. Is there another form on this one? Can you get me to the, get me to the website? It is the, um, it's, there's a form that if you, you have any questions on the master eligibility form, there's a form that's not required by the state, but they recommend you using it. You go to School Central Eligibility and then click down, Student Athlete Eligibility, there you go. So it's this form, which basically it says, uh, it's to be used on the student athletes when questions arise about eligibility when completing the other form. So what we want to do differently this year is for our athletic directors in high school, if someone lives outside your district, you fill out this form. And it could be open enrollment, starting ninth grade. I mean, it could be something very simple, you know, whatever reason that somebody might live outside your district. We also want to do it if someone has had a bona fide move in the previous 12 months, they fill out this form. And if you look at, at the bottom of this form, it is, uh, like all of them, it is signed by the coach, the A D and the principal. But that, so if anybody in the previous 12 months has had a bona fide move, that they fill out this form. Now, what I want to be able to do is so if there's a question that happens here and somebody, you know, Ethan Linker, you know, he doesn't live there, well, I immediately can send whatever school he's attending and the school he left, send both A Ds and the superintendent an email saying, hey, check this person out. But we want to do it sooner rather than later, you know, and that's, and that's kind of what we're trying to get to. But that's kind of the protocol. But that's kind of the protocol they want to do. And then I want to have deep conversations with the, a lot of our A Ds don't want to get involved. Well, if you've got concerns, let us know quickly. You know, let's not find out in the middle of a season. You know, a lot of these things, before we've played any games, there's really not a penalty to the school. And, and a lot of times, certain people have known, but yet, well, they, they don't want to get involved with that. He did, he's no longer at my school, or she's no longer at my school, that's somebody else's problem. Well, no, it's all our problems. So, but the, the biggest change we want to do is have, anytime there's a question, if they're out of your district, or if they've had a bona fide move in the last year, that this form is filled out. And this form has it where they have their current address they've listed and then their previous address. So if there's any question, it can be checked both addresses. And that's, that's what I propose, and that's what we're hoping to do to maybe not run into some situations we did this year.
Okay, are there questions from any board members to Ron on this proposed new process?
Don.
Okay, that's Worth. Go ahead, Worth.
Yes, sir.
Don, this form that you were, this form that you were just mentioning, with that North Carolina High School Association Student Athletic Eligibility Form, is this a form, is this something different than what they have been completing? Is that what you're saying? This is when they, or they live outside the district and when they have a bona fide move, you're saying that's when they're going to complete this particular form that you just mentioned?
Correct.
And we haven't been doing that, but this is something we are adding. Is that correct?
Well, if they'd had any questions, they should have been doing it and keeping it on staff. The one thing that's going to be different is I want them to, to copy it and email it to me.
Okay, all right.
So Ron, this form is, so if there is a question that comes up on a student athlete, that's the point that you would fill this form out? Or are you proposing you fill out this form for every student on your team who is open enrollment or has a bona fide move in the last year?
An open enrollment would only be one time, you know, I mean, if you, if, if somebody enters as a freshman, open enrollment, then, you know, until they change schools, we wouldn't need it again. But it's really, I want something in front of me, so if somebody raises a question, I can come back and go, well, you know, Betsy Flanikin, you know, duh, 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 this is the situation. And it might be that we know that there's a house being built and there is a contract and there, you know, it should be finished on this date. But we at least need to know the information so we can satisfy the questions that come up.
Okay, so it provides a little additional oversight at the county A D level for these scenarios? Yeah, I think it's great. Are there any other, Caroline, did you have a question?
Yeah, I typed it in the chat box. Basically, the bottom of the form where you list if there's the question, if there's been a move in the previous 12 months, it seems to me like there might ought to be a date listed as to when they left that previous residence or residences. Not just blank lines.
Well, we can ask them to, to put the dates that they moved.
Yeah, just put a date heading for one part of that. I think that would be helpful. You'll, you'll figure out, anyway, I think it would be helpful if it's a recent move or if it was, you know, eight months ago.
Got you. Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments for Ron?
Do they have to sign this, the parent?
No, no, this is, this is done at the school. This is just the athletic director, coach. You wanted to start with the coach, then the athletic director. And it's done differently at different schools. Sometimes athletic director wants to do everybody's quite often. It's better if the coaches do it and then the athletic director oversees that and obviously the principal has to oversee both of them.
Am I missing this? I don't see it on our attachment for this agenda item.
It, it will be added.
Yeah, she pulled it up from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's website.
Thank you. I, I saw the other ones, but not this one.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think next up is Matt with an A G Cox Middle School project update.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. If everybody remembers, back in, on January 30th, we opened a bid for the A G Cox addition and renovation project and found out that it was way out of our budget. So we've been working with Height and Associates and all of his team and designers to come up with reasons why it was so out of our budget and come up with a redesign that would do several things. One would be reduce the environmental impact by reducing the acres that were disturbed on the site and lower the amount of erosion control measures that had to be put in place. Reduce, reduce the phasing durations through the project. Reduce the overall length of the project and lessen the complexity of the project. With all of this in turn, hopefully, bringing down the actual cost of the project, as well as looking into making sure we are soliciting more bidders for the project to bring in more competition. So what we've got here is the 80% complete design, or the three drawings that I pulled out to, to show you today. And the first one you got on your screen is the overall floor plan, which basically is the overall site plan for A G Cox. And this is the new design on what we've got going. So I'm going to kind of start from left to right and, and talk from left to right across the page and just kind of give you a brief update on what this is showing us. And then I'll go into the new classroom building a little bit with that. So on this drawing you're looking at right here on the left-hand side, it's the new parking lot, which brings parking on campus, which has always been the intent. But what we've done here with this design is we've reduced the actual footprint of the parking lot. We've, we've turned the parking spots to angles to try to keep the number of parking spots as high as possible. We did lose 10 on this plan versus the last one, but we also were able to keep the parking down at the bottom of the screen that's on the Sylvania Street. So we overall netted an increased 14 spots in the total of this. As you move across to the right a little bit, you'll see that the admin area, the new admin offices area, where the old 1926 building would have been, it's going to be removed. This area has not changed. It's pretty much stayed the same from initial design to what it is right now. So it's going to remain as is. As we keep moving to the right, we come to the cafeteria and band area that's currently existing. On the top of the page in the center is where we initially had put in the new media center and a small expansion to the cafeteria on that area, which was another ground-up construction from there, which is more slight disturbance. In this design, we've eliminated the addition, the small addition to the cafeteria, and we've actually moved the media center into the new classroom wing, which is down on the, the bottom right side of the page of the building that you see there. This building was originally one-story. We have increased it to two-story. And like I said, moved the media center into that wing, so it'll be a two-story building on the property once we get this thing bid. I'd like to move on now to drawing A 501. And this shows you the first floor of the new classroom wing with media center. On this floor, we have a, we have three traditional classrooms. We have two math-science classrooms, have one large art room. We also have a teacher resource room on this, in this floor as well. So on the second floor, if we go to 601, drawing 601, this is the second story. Upstairs, we have four traditional classrooms. We have a maker space, a video production center, as well as the, the new media center up here. So with all this, we're hoping to be able to reduce our impact on the site, reduce the acreage that were, that were disturbing. And with the meetings that we've had so far with the town of Winterville, we believe we've achieved that to bring the $1 million-plus site work back down into reasonable numbers and reasonable bids. We, we also believe that lessening the duration, lessening the complexity of the project and the less interface when students are on-site or where buildings tie into existing or operational buildings on-site, it's going to actually reduce the, the cost of this. So what we're doing now is these drawings are going to be ready for us to get and start reviewing to Pitt County Schools, D P I, Winterville, and that sort of thing mid-June. We've got about a four-to-six week review time, depending on how long it takes D P I to get through their, get through the drawings and give us their comments back. And at that point, we'll have a full 100% design set with this new layout of the whole site and the new buildings and that kind of thing. We are continuing to watch the market to see where this is, to see where we are with, with, with pricing coming in. We do know Johnston County Schools had a bid in late February that came in around $220 per square foot, which is more in line with the construction of, of the K-12 that we've seen over the last 12 to 18 months. Nowhere near the $300-plus dollars that we, that we were here for this on what we, what we saw for the original bid documents here. So we are continuing to watch that. We are reaching out to several more contractors, subcontractors and all that to make sure we can definitely get more responsive bidders to, not responsible, but more response to the bid out of this one. I do see some questions on here. The two-story building does have an elevator as well as stairs on both ends. So getting up and down is, would not be an issue for any student. We have some elevators in, in buildings already, so this would just be another one for us to put into our maintenance program. So yes, there is elevators in this. The, yes, better than the slow stair lifts. Yeah, we, we don't like those things at all, so elevator is definitely the way we want to go here. Thanks for, but just kind of want to give you an update. My hat's off to Height, Wilson Pugh, Rivers, our, our design group. You know, with, with this pandemic, it's, it's been a challenge for them to get together, to put these meetings together. They, they, they're kind of like us. They're, they're zooming in on everything. A lot of times in the construction industry, a Zoom meeting without being actually there on-site to see it for your own eyes is really tough to do. But, you know, my hat's off to those guys for continuing to push through and get this design done for us. So are there any questions on the A G Cox and where we are? When this is done and when we feel like the time is right, we'll definitely bring you back the 100% design and let you know that it's going out on the street.
Okay, I don't see any questions.
Man.
Oh, yep, go ahead, Benji.
Are you beginning to notice any difference in construction costs, et cetera, due to this pandemic since we've been through it now about two or three months?
Not, it's, it's, it's not as evident right now, but it's definitely, the trend is definitely slowing. If you bid something in a month from now, I think you're going to get better pricing than you would today. And it's the trend that we're in right now. And it, and it's, you know, it's, it's like every, everything else. It's all driven by where the economy is. And our pricing is going to be driven by that and how fast we, the economy really bounces back from the, the situation we're in right now. I think that over the next couple of months, we're, we're going to get into some pretty decent pricing. I, I do know that the Johnston County School that, that bid late February, it was right in line with what the prices should have been or what we thought should have been and Height and Associates thought should have been for our project. So, you know, I, I don't know that we were well out of line for, for saying we, we thought we were well out. I know we were way out of budget, but we were not out of line saying that we should not accept these, these bids at this time, just based on that, that bid, you know, a month later. So we're, we're continuing to watch the market. We've got our feelers out to our contractors, our subcontractors, our architect and design group, and just, you know, talk to them as often as we can and get this information so we can make the best decisions on, hey, now's the time, guys, let's go pull the trigger and get it out there.
Okay.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And I think the last item is Dr. Linker with a COVID-19 update.
Just two quick things. Dr. Lassiter will have something as well. Jennifer Johnson's here as well if you have more questions. But we did release, according to the, what the, the board direction we got a week or so ago, we did release our tentative graduation schedule. And notice it says tentative with asterisks on both sides of it. This is something we are shooting for. This is our goal. This is what we would consider our best-case scenario. If this was last week, it would have been perfect. If it was this week with the rain, it would not have been perfect. So we obviously are, will be monitoring every little thing going on. But we are, based on what we are hearing, we are assuming we will be in phase two of the governor's reopening plan at that point, which would, should allow us to have this without being outside, being in football fields with small groups. So, but this is the tentative schedule we've got. Well, you can see on the second slide, you have all the F A Qs that we've been asked over the last couple of days. Plus, we're, we've been anticipating the questions, trying to come up with all those and sharing as much as we can with everybody. So at this point, I don't, if you have, if you've had a chance to read through all this in the, in sometime last week, if you saw the, the Facebook, the tweets and everything else going on, you had a chance to see, see where we are. So what kind of questions might you have? I've also talked with Senator Don Davis, have asked him to keep working on getting us more guidance on what, if there's something we're overlooking with our graduation and where we are. This is why you see that the three big high schools are having two graduations to keep the numbers down, so then they'll all be the same size compared, as the same as the small, the smaller three schools. And then we'll actually be able to start with Pitt Academy and our early college, Pitt Early College, almost as a, just a way to get a good look and see what it looks like, see if, what, if we're missing anything with much smaller numbers there. Questions?
Comment, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Benji.
Dr. Linker, I don't know who came up with the frequently asked questions, but from a school board member's perspective, I really appreciate it because I really do think that the questions and answers that you have listed have saved a lot of telephone calls from concerned parents and does a very good job of explaining why we have done what we have done. Again, I'm very, very appreciative of the central office staff and the commitment of the school board and all the members of the school board to try to have this thing as normal as possible with all the safety concerns that, try, trying to get those taken care of as well.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. That would be Ms. Jennifer Johnson, working closely with our principals, with Preston Bowers and Ms. Yanisha Mann. So all of those working together, I don't know how many times they met last week, but I was in on one or two of them. They had met more than that, just to make sure that they were all on the same page. So that this is really Jennifer and Preston and Yanisha and all of our high school principals working together as a team to make this work.
Any other questions?
We will certainly keep the board updated as we move through this on what we're hearing out of the governor's office as when we get into phase two and wherever, assuming that's where we'll be by the first of June.
Okay, very good. Well, this was, I think, this was a great work session. Are there any other?
Dr. Lassiter has something.
Sorry, Dr. Lassiter. I don't mean to cut you off, ever.
It's perfectly okay. I will be brief, quick and brief.
Would you like a pencil microphone?
Good afternoon to all board members again. I will be very brief and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. As I shared, I believe, at the last board meeting, that felt like it was just last week almost, was that our team met together regarding the remote learning plan factors that these, that is now in state statutes. So just to very quickly and briefly share those. We met as a team. A number of us got together at the deal building. And as you recall, this was the virtual learning plan that we shared with you a few, a month or two ago. And as you recall, this was the virtual learning plan that we shared with you a few, a month or two ago. And now, I don't see the, I don't see where the notes are. Hmm, this isn't. This isn't the, oh, hold on one second. Let's see. It's not there. Okay. Let's see here. Okay, I'm not sure where it is. It's showing on my document. However, it's not visible here. So I'll just briefly explain, in regards to this particular document, we're using it as the foundation for our remote learning plan. And we did outline those 13 factors for the remote learning plan. We outlined those, and then we assigned who would oversee each of those tasks in those remote, throughout the remote learning plan. Also, we had further discussion about awarding teachers digital learning credits. And so they are now, hopefully we'll have more discussions based on what they've done these past couple of months to consider the option of allowing them to have some digital learning credits. So... Yeah, click here. I don't know. Okay, so that's the, that's basically the digital, the remote learning plan. Hopefully at a later board meeting, I can come back and share with you the details of it. I'm not quite sure why the document that I have isn't showing here. But it is in the rough draft form, and I will certainly happily go over that once we get into the final stages of it. But we are addressing those 13 factors. The last one that is exciting news, that we will continue remote learning after May 22nd. And there are some digital resources that we're placing on the district website on May the 26th. So just a quick preview for you as board members. It'll look similar to this. Actually, our team in Educational Programs and Services is organizing it, and then we'll share it with our public information officer to arrange on our district website with our current resources. And just as an example, for those students in kindergarten, they will, kindergarten and first grade, et cetera, they'll have access to iReady. So parents can click on that icon there. I will click, and they can log in and work on iReady throughout the summer and after May 26th. So they'll have access to that. And then if they, they have a K-2 ELA Choice Board, if the parent hovers over any of these resources, these digital resources, the students can click on them and can have access to those digital resources. So there are a number of resources that we created K through high school. And then, if parents don't have access to the digital resources, there are some iReady printable packets that they have available, so those parents can print those. If they can't print them at home, they may come to the school and ask the principal to print them for them. So we'll still have a number of these ready, and if we're still continuing meals, they can request that it be placed on a bus and sent home. So we'll still have that available, and they'll have access to that so that we can continue learning. And they'll have access to those packets that we put up earlier this year. And we'll be able to continue learning with our students throughout the summer and the fall, until we return in the fall. Okay? Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Dr. Lassiter?
I have one.
Yep, go ahead, Worth.
Mr. Lassiter, those programs that, you know, many of those kids, and you know, there may not be any way to do this, but many of those programs that the teachers are using, I can't even think of the exact ones that I'm talking about, but you've got to have usernames and passwords for each different program, like Seesaw, for example, in kindergarten. You've got to have a password, a username and a password to be able to go to that particular site. Then to read the books, they had to have another username and password. Is there any way to get that so that once a child is logged in, that they are able to go from one site to the other, or not? I don't know. I'm just asking this question.
I believe that, I forget the name of the platform, that where the students are able to go into one resource and login. Clever, thank you. Clever should allow them. Is that right, Jeff?
If the program is compatible with Clever, then yes.
Absolutely. So yes, sir, there is a way. It depends on, we use Clever for most of our programs where they're housed. It will depend on whether or not, you know, it's compatible with Clever. However, we did share with teachers at the very beginning to send that information home with their, with students, and we let parents know that it was accessible through the teacher, if they don't, if it's not compatible with Clever.
So more than likely, the kindergarten programs, they were not compatible with Clever. Is that right?
Some of them probably will not be, such as, you know, maybe I think like you said, Seesaw and certain ones may not be.
Okay.
And a lot of those programs are purchased at the school level and not at the district level.
And another question I have, I know for, for example, kindergarten, a lot of those kids, they're gonna really need to, hopefully some will be reading over the summer. But I think that's gonna be very important. And so you're saying that is gonna be available to those kids over the summer. Is that right?
Yes, sir. We're going to leave all of this up throughout the summer. And I do believe that DPI is working on information to send districts regarding a K-3 or K-4 reading and math summer support. And as soon as we get that information, we'll be able to determine whether it's in face-to-face or if it's gonna be through remote learning. So there are some funds that the Department of Public Instruction will be giving schools to do some summer programs as well, in addition to these resources we're making available.
Well, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Lassiter?
Yes, I submitted a question in the chat. Caroline?
Yep, go ahead, Caroline.
Okay, the devices that we checked out to students, I'm assuming they're gonna be able to keep them through the summer, and if they don't have connectivity at home, they all know where they can go to get public wireless, like at our schools, our parking lots, right? And then what, how are we doing in terms of every student having a device?
Yes, ma'am. So I'll answer your question backwards. So Tim and I talked Friday. I think we also talked with Dr. Lassiter. I believe, if my memory serves me correct, we are 5,000 devices short from being one-to-one, somewhere near there. I'll double-check, but I know we're somewhere in that range. We're looking at the funding that we've received to sort of add more devices. So that's on our agenda to add more devices for the upcoming school year and work towards having enough devices for our students in some way, whether it's one-to-one or just being able to access devices. The other part of that question is, schools are asking for devices to be returned. However, if a student needs a device throughout the summer, I'm sure, and we'll share this also tomorrow at our principals' meeting, that they can lend those devices throughout the summer to families who may not have access to one.
Okay, so the thought being that some families will have purchased devices during the pandemic or something else?
Well, because of the school year is coming to a close and inventory is having to be returned and accounted for for the school year, those devices usually are returned at the school, at the end of the school year. So that's why we're asking for the devices to be returned. However, if parents have a situation where they like to utilize that device throughout the summer because they have a hardship, they certainly can talk with their principal and the schools can lend out those devices.
Okay, so when you were saying, presenting the information about the remote learning being available through the summer, you're basically saying this is optional. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
What you're saying, these are things parents can use if they have devices and connectivity and they're motivated and have the time to work with their students over the summer?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
Well, that's a nice, that's very nice for students who have families that are in that position.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Lassiter? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate, we appreciate it. And it looks like, as you can see from our agenda, we have the COVID stuff, but we have business as usual too. So thank you, everyone, for hanging in there. The last item is items from me, and I don't have anything in particular to mention. So at this time, I think we have closed session. If, do we have a motion from Melinda?
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to general statute 143.318.11 for the following purposes, under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personal information, DS 115C-319, under subsection A3, to consult with our attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Okay, I have a motion from Melinda. Do I hear a second?
I second.
I think that was, second was from Anna Barrett. Any discussion?
Correct.
Okay, hearing none. We will vote to go into closed session. Let me get my list of names here. Anna Barrett Smith?
Yes.
Amy Cole?
Yes.
Benji Forrest?
Yes.
Caroline Doherty?
Yes.
Mary Blunt Williams? Mary Blunt Williams? We have Mary? Okay, I don't have a vote for Mary. Melinda Fandis?
Yes.
Tracy Everett-Lenz?
Yes.
And Worth Forbes?
Yes.
Okay, so I have, we have, we have a, the motion passes eight to one. I guess the no vote would be a... Oh, she, okay. So the motion passes eight in favor, so we will go into closed session at this time.